Um, I will open up the February sixteenth meeting of the Hamilton Planning Board. It's a couple of minutes after seven o'clock. Um, this meeting is being recorded and we need to do a roll call of who's here. So just uh, when I say your name, say here, I, uh, Marty.
Marty Crouch present.
Rick.
Rick Mitchell present.
Corey.
We're all you present.
Richard.
Richard Boroff present.
And Brian Stein is also present and we have Patrick Graffit as well, planning director and Larry Smith is with us as well. So on our agenda tonight, um, we will be talking about our potential flexible residential zoning bylaw. And Larry Smith is a developer who's here to provide some input to us. Uh, we will also potentially be talking about uh, a zoning map change around the winter school site in that area. And uh, other board business in minutes a little later on. So, um, Larry, I know you've probably been talking to Patrick a little bit about what we're doing and you've obviously seen and hopefully read the bylaw.
I did.
Um, we had, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, um, with, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with a couple of other developers and you know, they had some questions and great comments and so forth. So I'm assuming we'll probably hear some similar ones from you, but um, you know, we always welcome everyone's input and would love to hear what you have to say. Um, so unless anyone else has any other points, Patrick or anybody, um, we can open the floor up to Larry for his, for his comments on the bylaw.
Sure. Thanks. Thanks, Brian. So I think the questions that you posed um, are good ones and I'd like to respond to those. Maybe that's the easiest way to cut through the chase and, and, and reference your matrix. So the first question, you ask about sufficient incentive to build financially with the new flexible development uh, information. So my question is, my comment is uh, really not, and I put that uh, mostly due to the economic effect of the affordable housing bylaw. I don't know if any of the other developers brought that up. But it does trigger. So if you look at your examples uh, on page five and the two examples in zone R dash one B. Uh, so I, I always, we always look at things in our world as um, payment and LOUUP in the affordable housing, um, and, and maybe that's the basis of which a developer would um, would be diverting funds to another, another avenue versus their profit. But in um, in the scenario for the R dash one B, going to fifteen units would, at least on my calculation, would, would trigger um, two, two hundred thirty-one thousand dollar payments. Uh, that would equal four hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. So those fifteen units, that would be developed under this bylaw and using those uh, density bonuses. Not only would there be a five hundred dollar, five hundred thousand dollar payment, it'd be an additional, just round numbers, call it additional five hundred thousand dollar payment. So that's a million dollar payment for building fifteen homes. Now, a lot of what I have to say is, you know, based on what people pay for, for land, uh, what developers pay for land and um, obviously in our, our experience in our two, one, one purchase and one under agreement parcel in, in Hamilton, things are pretty expensive compared to uh, other, other towns. So um, I would believe, and by the way, in the, in the example that you have below in zone RA as well, that would also trigger a four hundred sixty-two thousand dollar payment. And anybody could ask me where I got those numbers from. I'm happy to explain it and maybe, maybe I read it incorrectly. So I think when you trigger um, the affordable housing plus the effect of the uh, payment for the open space, it's a pretty hefty price tag to uh, to pay for again, those type of unit counts.
Yep.
So Larry, the only way that you could compensate for the, in, in those uh, costs would be to, if you were to proceed with the development would be rate prices of the units that you sell.
That's correct. So I could tell you a little bit about our, our experience with that. I mean, sales are good right now. Actually, sales are, are good for, um, this might segue into my next comment. Uh, sales are good for larger units and smaller units in the world of COVID or even in triplexes, the middle unit. Um, it seems that those are much harder to sell today versus uh, a year ago. And um, we, we believe it's because those middle units in triplexes just don't have sunlight, but it's also the perceived um, issues with a buyer that has people on both sides of them. And again, in the world of covert, I think everyone's looking for a little bit of separation. So it's, it's not that easy to uh, raise pricing. It's easier now than it was a year ago, but it's still pretty, pretty difficult. Um, and I could tell you just to share a, um, you know, internal story that we have. Our proposed site uh, at one thirty-three Essex Street has a um, we're going to propose fifty units and that is a affordable housing, and I'm not here to talk about affordable housing, but I'll just share this with you. Affordable housing payment of one point six, almost one point six five million dollars over the uh, life of the project. And that's, that's pretty substantial. And the only reason I was able to get funding for that is because our investors are firm believers in affordable housing. And they're willing to take less of a return, hypothetical return um, based on that. I don't know if other developers, I assume they do not think the same way we do when it comes to affordable housing. So I, you know, one of my recommendations is uh, I know you're trying to get funding towards open space, but if there's a way of having some flexibility on the affordable housing side that you don't continually trigger as, as you, as you get bonus units, um, there should be some mechanism that uh, there's some flexibility in the triggering of the affordable housing. That's my long-winded answer to number one.
So can I ask, ask a question, Larry?
Please.
Um, did you have any comment on um, as it relates to the bonus for land, open space preservation? Is that in terms of the amount?
So like, you know, I, I, I think if, if you're, to me, if you're looking for uh, developers who are not going to trigger the affordable housing, I think it's fine. Make sure you don't tell it to any of my colleagues, but I, I think, I think it's fine to trigger um, if you're less than ten units, to trigger fifty to a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar payments. I don't see that breaking uh, a financial model in that world. But I just think, so, so this, I don't know if that answers your question, Rick, but I think in small, by the way, as, as land gets more difficult to find, because I think all the, you know, the parcels with, that are flat and sandy soils and all the other good things that, that developer look for, you know, those are few and far between available today. So all the land that should they, all their, any land that's available usually is more difficult to develop with, with wetlands and ledge and all kinds of other obstacles. So, so I don't know again, Rick, if that answered your question, but I think for, for somebody that's building less than ten units, I think it is not a big ask. But when you, when you tack on the affordable housing piece, it skews the financial models to uh,
Okay. Good to know. I mean, this is the, exactly the kind of feedback that we're looking for.
Good.
Um, if I might, I'm just gonna um, move on to the questions. Uh, if you thought about where this might be appropriate um, as zoning district for one versus other.
So that's your number two question and, and I don't think I'm qualified to answer that because I don't really know your town well enough. I'm embarrassed to say, I don't, I don't know the uh, you know, what land is available. The, the thing I, you know, I do know is that typically from our land searches in other towns, it's usually in the most, the less dense area. So I would, I, you know, I would think it's in the um, RA district that things would, land would be as long as it's not in perpetual conservation restrictions. I think over time, as families age and they want to sell land, I, I, I think it's, again, this is all hypothetical. I think your RA district would, would have more opportunities, but that's, that's, I'm only saying that based on experience in other towns and searching for land. I'm not basing it on um, my knowledge of Hamilton because I don't know Hamilton well enough to really comment on that other, other than my experience in other towns.
Okay. Um, the next question uh, was when, which density boats, yeah, density bonuses, would you most likely choose? Which would you most likely not choose? I mean, we're doing some social engineering here, so we're trying to get a sense of that you thought or?
Yep. So I'll break that down. I have it broken down by the multiple questions asked in uh, number three. Um, so we, we would choose the efficiency because we build higher efficiency units and that would be great. And then I would also uh, again, this is the way we operate as developers. Um, the land set aside, so I, I don't believe your develop a land definition is, is that precise? Because typically when we look at land that's available today, there's uh, wetlands typically isolates a section of the property. So um, it could be a no-brainer to uh, give away that open space if it's uh, isolated wetlands, isolated by wetlands. I don't, and I think you're, I, I know in other towns we've looked at, the develop a land has a definition that um, that requires it to be contiguous. And unless I missed it, Rick, at least in um, at least in the, the bylaw, the draft bylaw you sent over to me, I, I didn't see anything about contiguous uh, land. So, so I would, I would be, if I was looking at this bylaw and trying to uh, look where the bonus has made sense, I'd, I'd look right for that. And I don't know if that's something that the town is really looking for. Um, the next part of your question, which, which would you most likely not utilize? And for us, it's small units. They're again, in a town like Hamilton, they're just really not marketable and, and if the world is going to change away from COVID, maybe they might be more marketable. But right now they're, they're, they're not.
Is there a wise, how would you quantify a small unit layer?
Anything less than eighteen hundred square feet or even two thousand square feet in our world is small.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and buyers, again, in today's world, they're not interested in that. And again, remember our world is still a plus fifty-five world. So that's, which I know is not part of this. So uh, this bylaw. So I think you gotta take some, some of my comments with a grain of salt. We know that business well and I don't, and we do not know the business of selling outside plus fifty-five, although I do have to say our Magnolia site in Gloucester, forty-five units on fifty acres. It was zoned with a um, subdivision rule and it was allowed to put two units on on a lot. But in the six years we were building there, I don't think I could count on one hand, a person less than fifty-five that came in to look at a condo. There's just not, not a demand.
Right.
So, so we're, we're not really um, if, again, if we were going through this, we would not be interested in your smaller unit bonus. Um, and your next question. Yeah. So I, I would think that if you're asking, if you're asking my opinion on what, would give you more, oh, it would be the set aside for um, more uh, for open space. I think the bonus should be higher because that's a painful uh, process for someone like us. To put a, you know, the more open land that we have to give is the less we, units we could typically get on. So um, there might, there might be bigger opportunity to increase that percentage.
So you're saying that the incentive for open space should be higher or?
Should be high. The percentage should be higher. Correct. To, to, to incentivize somebody. And I, and I think that, Rick, that might feed back to, if you consider open space uh, that's not contiguous with your other space.
Right. Okay, good. Um, yeah. And did, how about the uh, water and is, you said energy efficiency?
Yeah, that's a no-brainer for someone like us. We would.
And how about?
We would exercise that.
Okay. And how about water?
I'm sorry, water, did you say?
Yeah, water.
Water efficiency.
Water conservation or efficiency or?
Yeah, water conservation slash efficiency.
Yes, that would not be a difficult thing for us to do.
One of the comments, or several comments we got from uh, two other developers were, they were concerned about and the need for us to define what is, you know, what are the standards of efficiency? Are, are we asking to go beyond current um, building codes? And if we are, what are the standards we're asking and how are we going to measure that? And so they were just asking for more clarity.
Yeah. So I, when I looked at that, Rick, you know, I immediately talked about our hers rating that we get on each of our units.
Yeah.
I really didn't, I really didn't think about the water efficiency exterior of the units, if that's what you're referring to. Are you?
Well, it's water usage.
Water usage.
Yeah, like lower flow fixtures.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty easy stuff. I think we would not be uh, we would be amenable to that. Anything within the unit that's efficient, whether it be energy efficient or water conservation, um, our organization would, would be in favor of.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You, excuse me, would you consider solar as well?
So you know, solar is actually uh, again, we're in the, in the world of condominiums and typically anything on the outside of the unit is the uh, HOAs, but also there's uh, always a need to um, depending upon the lot to preserve trees on the lot. We're going through uh, something in Groton right now where um, there's debate going on to keep as many trees available around units. And also do, do incorporate things like solar. So, so that's, that's, that's a tough one.
Yeah, because they're going to compete with each other.
That's right.
Yeah.
It's very, it's very hard. Uh, so for the two reasons, we're, we're typically not in favor of solar.
Okay.
What were the two reasons you're not in favor of solar?
Uh, we want to preserve the trees.
Right.
Around the uh, unit and, and typically, um, this is, this is more of an administrative thing. We, we build condominium units and uh, one of the things that our buyers like is that everything is taken care of outside the, outside the building. And if you had, um, and they also like a little bit of the uh, uniformity between buildings. And if you put solar panels, at least on selected buildings where there was sunlight, uh, it'd be in conflict with what we believe buyers want to see.
Interesting. Never would have thought of that.
Yep.
Well, I, I just mentioned that because uh, their, their Tesla has um, has uh, solar tiles that actually look like regular roofing tiles.
Things. And also Tesla is coming up with a battery pack uh, to give you solar uh, power twenty-four seven. So things might change.
Right, right. Thank you for that because I, I was aware of those Tesla tiles really uh, because my husband and I are looking at them uh, uh, in the future when we replace our roof. And so they are much more aesthetic than the solar panels.
And, and so you tie, you tie in a battery uh, the power of your house at night, it's uh, it really becomes, depending on the, the initial uh, capital cost, it really could be quite the game changer.
Would that be an incentive that we should consider adding or do you think it would be premature to do that? Or what are your thoughts on that?
Uh, my thoughts are always the balance of the trees, right? There's so many people that just want to see whatever trees are on the site preserved. So I think it might be premature today to add that to uh, zoning. Well, maybe, maybe there's a way you could uh, again, um, kind of get that pre-approved through a town meeting and uh, insert it into the bylaws as, as needed.
It, it wouldn't necessarily have to be used, but it, it, it would be available. That was my thought.
Good, good comment. Um, number four, did I, well, uh, did I answer everything on number three, Rick?
Yeah, this, uh, I think so.
Great. So number four, uh, so you just mentioned the financial impact of the fifty thousand dollar fee and not the other two fees. Um, but again, I, I think if it's a, in my opinion, uh, those initial fees, all three of them in all three districts, if they're less than a, if they don't trigger the affordable housing, I think they're palatable.
Okay. I don't think we realized that we were subjecting potential applicants to double jeopardy. Brian, did you, we talk about that?
I think we touched on it.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's in this draft.
It's in the draft. We, we essentially said that, that, that the affordable housing bylaw applied to this bylaw.
Oh, okay. So if we wanted to, if we wanted to change that, we don't have to change the affordable housing bylaw. We have to change, we have to change this. Okay.
Yeah, we could, we could do some type of um, uh, uh, of some flexibility with the affordable housing. I was thinking in terms of the smaller unit, but if there's no demand for the smaller units, um, that, that could pose a problem. But again, it, it's, it's a, an incentive that's available. It doesn't necessarily have to be used.
And I want to ask a question of Patrick. Can, can, is it legal for, let's say this, in, within this um, flexible development bylaw to say it excludes um, applicability of the affordable housing bylaw? Can you exclude one bylaw from another or do you have to rewrite the affordable housing bylaw?
You simply write it in a way that allows the desired bylaw to not have to comply with that requirement.
Okay. So that, so you can carve it out in a specific bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. There's no reason, you know, for instance, there's no affordable housing requirement in RA, RB or, you know, R one, we just don't have that, you know? So I use those as examples.
Okay. Um, okay. So I guess we go on to five.
Yep. Let me just read that real quickly again. I have an answer, but I want to make sure I understand the question.
And, and if any of the um, board members don't have that, we can always read them.
Yeah, would you please?
Okay. Well, number five is compared to Hamilton's current senior housing bylaw, allowing up to four units per acre for age fifty-five housing. Does the flexible development by, by the financially viable slash attractive alternative for building market rate housing open?
So our experience, and I can only go by our experience, uh, as I said earlier, I think um, younger buyers are really not interested in new construction condominium. And part of the reason to that is um, you know, the cost to build is uh, pretty substantial and we typically sell, I mean, take, take a look at Canterbury, for example. Uh, we're selling units now eight hundred thousand dollars to nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of base price. And the homes on Sharon Street, single-family homes are, I'm not quite sure how much they are, but I'm sure they're hundreds of thousands of dollars less. So that attracts a younger buyer. But I, but I do have a comment and, and talk about this on occasion in our, our world. I, well, I maybe have a question for, for this group first. Um, does, does Hamilton um, want to bring in young buyers to, to uh, send to the school system? Is there a need for that or is that still a tax negative, real estate tax negative situation?
Well, we um, that, that's a very good question. And I think it, everybody will probably have a different uh, point of view. Currently, our school system is uh, underutilized. Our school population has been dropping um, by fifteen, you know, fifteen percent over the last ten years. So um, there's not a direct, you know, if you add a younger buyers, unless you added a substantially new cohort, um, I don't think there's a, there's an impact. Oh.
So, so I, I, I believe that there's such a demand for entry-level homes for younger buyers, first-time home buyers. Um, I don't know how you, I don't, I don't know, you know, really the economics be, because we sell higher-end products. Um, but there's just such a demand. I mean, I have children in my late, you know, late twenties, early thirties, you know, that struggle to buy a home. They beg, borrow and steal from their parents and, and you know, whatever it takes to, to get that down payment. But I just see it on a regular basis through that demographic. And if there's a way to, I don't, I don't have the answer. But if there's a way to incentivize developers to, to build kind of clustered, single-family homes, uh, you know, that could sell in that five hundred and fifty to six hundred and fifty thousand dollar price range in today's world. Uh, and they could send their kids to a um, the youngsters to a uh, a quality school system like Hamilton. Uh, I think, I think people would be lining up to uh, to move to Hamilton and, and, but I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to how to.
I mean, is, is that, is that feasible in today's world with land cost and construction costs?
It's, it's, it's hard, Brian. There's no question. It's, it's, it's hard. And the build, the building codes make it hard because you know, you're building the same shell for a nine hundred thousand dollar unit as you would be for something much less. Um, but I just know there's a demand. I'm just, I'm just.
Oh yeah, no, absolutely.
You know.
So, and one of the ways that we're trying to figure out if we can help meet that demand is adding density, in other words. Uh, and then you take, please feel free to correct me. My thought is if you can add a higher level of density to compensate for the uh, caught land of costs and building, then you might be able to provide financial incentives to a builder to build smaller homes. Is that a fair?
I, I, I think, I think smaller detached homes is the key there. There's, again, there's something about the marketability. And again, I, I, I share just that comment I made about Magnolia. Those are Magnolia shores, how nobody ever came to look at it in that price range, the hundreds of people. Village Magnolia shores how nobody ever came to look at it in that price range. The hundreds of people that came by over the years. I don't think there were two or three couples that were less than fifty-five years of age. So. I think those buyers want their own lawn, their own four walls and it could be small.
And by small, what are you, what are you thinking?
I'm thinking of eighteen hundred square feet and by the way, those homes are easy to build because you don't have. Well, they have smaller footprints because you don't have to put. The master bedroom and all the services on the first floor like you do in the plus fifty-five world. So. It's less expensive to build second floors than it is to build first floors.
And, and just to delve into that a little deeper, any particular number of bedrooms? That you would think.
It's three bedrooms, no question. Two bedrooms. I mean, two bedrooms might attract us a smaller market, but. You know, the younger buyers that either about to have children or about to have children, you know, are always looking for that extra bedroom.
Okay.
Yeah, they would stay in that house longer than if they were to find a two bedroom early on and then have to move out immediately after that first or second kid.
Larry, I have a question.
Just Rich.
Getting into the personal area. For older people looking for everything on one floor. Handicap accessible like walk-in showers, stuff like that. That you don't see, well, we didn't, they didn't exist when I was looking for a house forty-some years ago. So we have a colonial garrison. Well, we're getting older and it's now getting difficult to live in this house as an older person. Is, is there more of a market now for more accessible housing? Either in individual homes or condominium type or whatever.
Well, Rich, you could come over to the. Build your Canterbury farms and we could sell you a unit. But the answer is, you know, the term we use is really aging in place. Bedroom on the first floor, doors are thirty-six inches wide. So if you ever have to get in a wheelchair, all the doors, showers without thresholds. Just everything about it allow you to stay there. The only potential issue is you have to have three steps to get into the home. We put, we put handicap ramps before. We haven't done one at Canterbury, but we've done them in Gloucester on a few occasions in our two communities there.
Yeah.
So aging in place is all about. The design that we put together today and the upstairs is for your adult children when they come and visit.
Right. I'm seeing that on a personal level. My son has a. House that was built in ninety-nine, I think it was, which is maybe a little bit more recent. And it is made for aging in place. Master bedroom and a walk-in bath all on the main floor. With other rooms upstairs. And we've got an older colonial garrison from around fifty-nine. That is not good for aging in place. It's an upstairs downstairs house.
Yeah, we're, we only designed the agent place, everything.
Pardon me?
Everything we do is to sell to a buyer that wants to age in place.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we're on to six and I think we kind of like. I answered that question, I'll read it as Richard doesn't have it. Is there a market for higher density? Multi-unit market rate residential development allowed by the flexible development bylaw? From what I've heard, there is, you know, houses or at least. And there are individual. Units, although at Canterbury, there are, I think, or what, two buildings that have, there are three units?
There are three buildings that have three units.
Yeah. Has that proven to be problematic in terms of sales?
Yes, we were lucky to find three and somebody. Just moved out of one, you know, they lived there for three months, didn't like it. They, you know, luckily they moved across the street and they bought a second unit. But this person's having all kinds of trouble selling that unit and we, we had trouble. We had a. Discount and giveaway options and upgrades to find buyers for those units.
Is it just because there are, they're sandwiched in between other units and they don't have the same amount of light?
Light, light is a big issue, Rick, no question. You know, so when you're sandwiched between units, the, everything downstairs is really small. So the master bedroom is small and when we try to have thirty-six inch doors going into the master bath as well. And showers that if one day you want to get a wheelchair in the shower, all that cannot be done in a, well, the thirty-six inch doors are there. But all these other great spatial features are not available in the middle unit. So.
So what are those going for now?
So the woman that, so we sold the base unit at five ninety-five. And I think, and the smallest one we had, the other ones were, I think, six twenty-nine. And then those people put options and upgrades into them. One of them is a single woman who put a lot of options and upgrades into them. And she, by the way, she moved to the second floor. She redesigned that entire unit and put a very spacious. Bedroom on the second floor and that's where she lives.
Interesting. Okay, and the last question is what changes would you make in either the bylaw, you certainly said, or the matrix? Certainly said the affordable housing component is. Too large. Hurdle to get over with when you include the open space requirement.
Yeah, I have a few, Rick. You know, again, the exclusion or just some. Easy trick, easier trigger to the affordable housing than, than what's in the bylaw right now. Oh, here's one. So is there? An incentive to have. Both, both senior housing and not age restricted, some percent. I know some towns allow a twenty percent. Non-age restricted component into the affordable, into senior housing. So there might be some benefit to developer there.
Can I ask you a question about the age restriction?
Sure.
Is that, is that a deed restriction?
Yes.
So twenty years down the road. If all the old people die off and there's no more demand for fifty, fifty-five plus housing. Can the majority of the homeowners petition the court to relieve them of that restriction?
Well, I would think they would be in front of the, in front of your board, I believe. I'm not sure the legal mechanism and by the way, Bill, you got, you got a good point because if you look at the demographic of the baby boomers. The curve is moving. To the right, so there'll be less of us around in about another seventh, eight years. So there, you know, there potentially could be a change.
But if those are on the deed, you would have to petition the court, not the planning board. Right?
I'd have to ask the following question. When you convey the units. Is there some type of a restriction either as a deed rider or in the deed itself? That restricts the transfer of the units to people who are only. Older than fifty-five and whether that restriction is permanent or limited in time. So if it's recorded, if it's on the deed, then the planning board couldn't affect it.
Right, so I kind of retract that comment. I'm not sure if it's on the deed. It's definitely in the condominium documents that you can't transfer this to anybody unless they meet the.
That's almost, that's almost like a deed. Okay.
Yeah, the condominium documents are recorded, but there may be a mechanism in the condominium documents that permit. Some type of change to the.
There's not, there is not, that's.
No, but there's common, common law precedent allows property owners to challenge deed restrictions after about. Twenty, twenty-five years. They can just say the world has changed. This was put on the deed, you know, back in ought. Whenever and the courts actually look pretty sympathetically on that.
Bill, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily, I don't want to contradict you. I don't know the law on that, but. It's a kind of buyer beware situation. So unless it was pretty unanimous, I would think that there. If anyone objected to these kinds of changes, it might be more difficult than you would think.
Well, you need a seventy-five percent vote to change a bylaw in the condominium.
Something like that, yeah. So it wouldn't, it would have to garner considerable support. Which might happen.
Yeah, a lot of that might happen because of change in.
Well, the demographics.
Demographics, yeah, exactly.
Yes, and remember, you, I don't know the reasons that you. I know reasons some towns and maybe this town as well, you know, the economic benefits to permitting. Or issuing a special permit to plus fifty-five community is almost every dollar that comes in in. In real estate taxes goes to the bottom line of the town because nobody goes to the school system. We plow our own streets, we do our own road maintenance. So that's a, that's a big benefit and if there was some way of reducing that benefit. That would be, you know, that would be a challenge. You know, just to give you an idea, Canterbury's going to generate about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. In, in real estate taxes to the town. And the prior owner, I think was paying thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And if our one thirty-three Essex Street comes to fruition, that's going to be seven hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. That goes to the bottom line of the town because children don't go to the school district. So it's a major economic, I think it's a major economic benefit for the town.
And in addition to that, you'd make a payment to the Affordable Housing Trust, which enables the town. To fund affordable housing projects. So yes, there's a very significant benefits.
I handed four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to Patrick in the last. Little over year.
Yeah, and Patrick, what are you doing with that money?
Yeah, he's going on vacation.
I saw that, I saw the massive Maserati you were driving. I was wondering what was going on there.
Right, the one that looks like an old Jeep?
That's just camouflage. We know what's under there.
And I have just one last comment and then I'll, I'll let you go. Or you could let me go, whatever's easier for you. So the town of West Newbury has a great. If you look under their, oh, it's the Open Space Preservation Development bylaw. They give a spreadsheet on the bonuses. Now theirs is much more complicated than yours. But I actually, we were looking at land there at one time and I just found it really useful, but I was able to take there. They actually put together a spreadsheet, a sample spreadsheet. And I was able to just create my own spreadsheet and go through the. Motions to see what was beneficial to us when we went ahead and did a. Play with our financial model. So just a, just a side comment.
So did the spreadsheet that they provided have embedded formulas in it or?
Well, it did, but you couldn't, it was. You know, it was a PDF. I mean, at one time it was created that way, but you could copy, copy the PDF and put it onto a spreadsheet or you just redo it yourself. But it was just all done for you. And again, it's more complicated than, than the matrix you presented, but it was also, I just found it as a developer, a very useful tool and I've never seen it. Anywhere else, by the way. So, just a comment. That's all I have. Unless anyone has a question for me.
One question that was raised a couple of weeks ago or issue that. All the developers had was the. In the bylaw we wrote, you know, you can't combine two parcels. To form, you know, one contiguous for large development. Is that an issue for you potentially?
Well, I always just think it's so hard. To purchase from two separate owners and combine. So we've never experienced that. So I would say from my experience, it's not an issue, but if that ever came up.
Part of it was around the R1A, B districts where we have smaller lots typically. So the bylaw wouldn't work as well in those two zones as it would in RA. Where you've got larger parcels generally. Especially in R1A where, you know, it's, you know. It's downtown and, you know, that area, you know, in much smaller parcel sizes. So I think it's felt that it would be really tough to do anything there.
I would agree. I, I, again, when I was done reading this, I said to myself, you know, mostly because of the affordable. Housing, I said, I think there's a great opportunity for. Smaller parcels, but then again, smaller parcels has left. They'll generate less revenue towards your open space fund.
Yeah.
But I think that's what might be happening in the future and also attract, it's not our business, but I think there's a larger community of. Developers that could develop ten units versus thirty units.
Right.
So maybe, again, I don't know if that's your, your goal, but I see this bylaw working for. That subset of developers.
That's interesting. Anybody else have questions for Larry before we let him go?
No, you've been very helpful.
Well, I'm happy to help and Patrick, thank you for reaching out to me and.
Thank you.
If anyone has any comments on this, feel free to call me at any time.
Great, appreciate it, Larry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry.
Have a good night. Thank you.
You too.
You too.
Good night.
Any comments on that, anybody? No, I think it was very, I think it was very helpful. I mean, Larry clearly is, you know, in the senior housing market. That's his niche and so that's where he's most comfortable. I thought the affordable housing component was an interesting comment, but not surprising actually because you are loading up. To, you know, open space and affordable housing on this vehicle. And so I, I wouldn't have a problem. One of the things, I'm thinking out loud here, so if you would allow me just to do a little. Thinking and Marnie, this, this relates actually to. The affordable housing and our need to come up with another, what, two hundred and twenty units? You know, we're all sort of thinking about, you know, World Board Theological Seminary actually. Move forward with its two hundred and ten units and make, and they become all affordable and we meet our. Our goal, that would be a wonderful thing to happen. Doesn't mean we can't still be thinking about ways to. You know, do different types of affordable housing, buying a single family home, you know. Making one or two units of that kind of thing. So if that does happen, then I wouldn't have a problem or even now thinking about. Excluding this bylaw from the affordable housing. Cause I'd like to see it work and this last comment was. You know, for smaller lots and smaller projects, this is probably a good. This may be a good vehicle.
Well, my, my comments with respect to. That. Are as follows. Number one, I agree with you a hundred percent about Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary and. At our last Affordable Housing Trust meeting. I indicated to David Smith that the Affordable Housing Trust would. Be very much amenable to any way that we could facilitate. More rapid decision making on the part of the seminary. Because with the, with the notion that we could pretty much satisfy our affordable housing goals. The, the, that's hanging out there and affecting all our decision making, not just the Affordable Housing Trust. Decision making, but also the decision making of the planning board. So that, that really. So that, that really, it, it, it's just such an unknown at this point, but it has such a profound, um, uh, effect on our thinking. And the other thing, uh, with respect to this bylaw, I would hate to see the Affordable Housing, uh, bylaw eliminated from consideration. But we could perhaps scale it back so that the trigger didn't happen until the number of units increase, say, from ten to twenty. And that's, I'm just thinking out loud. Um, so, or that if the, uh, developer were to go with smaller units. And again, there's now, I think from Larry's comment, a question whether there's even a market for that. But assuming there were smaller, single-family units, if that were to happen and those units were more affordable, more toward the five hundred thousand dollar range than the eight hundred to a million dollar range, which could easily happen. Then again, the affordable housing component could be, um, uh, the, the requirements could be scaled back in proportion to what, uh, a developer might do for the, uh, more, um, uh, you know, entry level buyer, for example.
So, so I mean, one thing we'll have to be careful of is, you know, again, I'm assuming that with this comment that Gordon Conwell happens, right? We get those units at some point. For now, we satisfy our requirement, you know, we're a ten percent. Uh, although in the future, as things get developed more, right, you have to accommodate those new units. Which is why the inclusionary housing bylaw was created in the first place, right?
Right, yeah. So I would hesitate to just give people a pass on the inclusion, inclusionary housing bylaw. But I could see that there might be an avenue of, of, of reducing when it's triggered or, or adjusting how it's triggered. And I don't know if anybody has.
What you're doing is you're substituting, you're substituting one penalty in exchange for open space as opposed to a penalty in exchange for, um, building affordable housing. It, it's double jeopardy. His, you know, when he, when you add the two together, um, that's a significant cost. Um, in terms of what developers normally put into land acquisition. It's very, it's a, it's a very big num, number.
No, and I, and I agree and I, and I, and, and I, I really appreciate that. Um, so again, uh, there, there might be ways of getting a smaller amount of money, a much smaller amount of money. Or, um, there wouldn't be a trigger unless there were a significant number of units. And even then, the amount of money could be less. Or, you know, if, if the planning board were to, to, to be so inclined, we could eliminate it. But Brian, you're right. I mean, even if Gordon Conwell were to go through, you know, we may have obligations down the road. So we don't want to cut off, uh, probably one of the single most, uh, important sources of funding for inclusionary housing in the town.
Yeah, and don't forget though, um, uh, if it's only excluded from this, we still have the senior housing bylaw where it is included and Larry was, seemed to be fine with that. He understood it was a cost of doing business. And it sounds like, you know, at least for the next ten years, there's going to be a real market, you know, for that. So, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust is going to be sitting on some good cash if and when thirty-three Essex goes forward.
Right.
Probably be sitting on a million and a half dollars.
Yeah, and there's other, there's other bylaws that trigger, you know, larger subdivisions. They all trigger the inclusionary. But, um, so yeah, I guess we'd have to weigh whether, you know, if we, if you left it off, let's say of this one, of the flexible housing, you know, do the other, other ones kind of compensate for it potentially. Um, or, you know, would somebody like Larry? If you left off the inclusionary on the flexible bylaw, would they then potentially use that bylaw for, over the, versus the over fifty-five? Cause they could, because we're not restricting any type of housing with this. You know, which one is, is better for them at that point?
I think that would depend on, you know, how he sees the market at this time, whether it's fifty-fives or whether, if it's five years down the road, that market's kind of ebbing. And he said, well, you know, younger people will, will take smaller units or whatever and I can build houses for them using the flexible bylaw.
No, I meant looking at like from his standpoint as an over fifty-five developer, which bylaw is better for him? Cause you, you can do whatever you want in this flexible bylaw. I mean, over fifty-five, whatever you want. Which one has the best incentives, right?
That's true.
For over fifty-five. And I haven't looked at it from that standpoint, honestly.
All right, well. What's the density premium, premium in the, in the senior housing bylaw?
Uh, after, oh, it's a set, it's a set amount, um, per unit.
Up to four per acre, right?
Say again?
Up to four per acre, I believe was the max you can get.
Oh, are you talking about density? I thought you said a formal housing payment.
Senior housing for density.
For the senior housing bylaw, yeah. I mean, we actually ought to make a comparison. Maybe Patrick could compare the two laws and say, where do you get the biggest, you know, bang for your buck in terms of extra units? Per dollar that you pay into something for, into some fund in the, between the two laws.
Yeah, and I mean, I think just thinking about it, right, if, if, you know, you get ten units in the senior housing bylaw with no inclusionary and then once you hit the ten and then every seven thereafter, you're paying the inclusionary, um, amount. That is probably less. I'm sure it's less than what you're paying per unit for the other, for the flexible. But you have to look at it with the same density too. That should be a fairly easy comparison.
I was thinking about comparing the senior with the flexible.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
But senior caps out at four, four per acre, whereas again, depending on which zone.
Oh, yeah, we, we have some more, definitely more than four eight.
So that's, that's the comparison, but you're paying for it, right? You're paying for it, so. Okay. There, moving on.
So fearless, fearless leader, what do we do next?
Yeah, we, anything new on the, um, zoning change, Patrick, or?
No, I was, uh, the question was related to flexible development bylaw. What do we want to do?
Oh, oh, what, what are we doing?
Yeah, what's our next, next step with this?
I do have a, uh, I've made a, uh, a communication with Alan Berry. He has given it some thought. He didn't have the ability to attend tonight. Uh, but he may at our next meeting if, uh, if people are interested in that.
So what, what would be helpful, um, before that is maybe a summary. I don't know how we accomplish this, but there are some key findings that came out of both of these meetings. One was Larry's was the affordable housing. Uh, the other from previous meeting that comes to mind was the assembling of lots, you know, can you, lots was a key issue.
Um, yeah, that was all, that was all bullet pointed in the, um, minutes. So that's, I think that's a good way to track it.
So, um, maybe we, maybe we wait for Larry Smith and then take, what are the six key? And just make that number up, uh, findings, recommendations that we should really, um, focus on, you know, do we want to include those, exclude those, modify them? What do we do, what do we do with them? And what are the next steps to keep this thing rolling?
Yeah. No, I think it's, it's getting, you know, Alan's input. Again, we'll start a list of, of all of these, um, issues that were brought up. And then, you know, at that point, you know, it's us, you know, talking about, you know, what issues make sense to incorporate or remove or change, um, right? And then, once we're done with that, um, either we send it back out to them, the developers, to see how we're doing or, and/or we, you know, start looking at, you know, public, public meetings.
Yeah, um, sounds like a plan.
Well, I think that's exactly right. I think that, um, the minutes do contain, um, a pretty, uh, good list of the different topics that were raised at the last meeting. But I think that for purposes of our discussion, uh, we might have to flesh, flush them out a little bit. But I think if we could get, um, a, a, a pretty cogent list of those topics, then we can go through them one by one and determine whether or not to make the, um, proposed changes or to reject them. And then it's a question of incorporating what we decide into the, to the actual language and, um, seeing how it had, turns out. And then, and then I, you know, I'm thinking it, it might not be a bad idea to send it out to the developers again with perhaps a very short timeline. But I found that Larry, by going through the, each of the questions, really I found his comments to be, uh, so much more understandable and, um, easier to incorporate than a more free, the more free-flowing, uh, conversation that we had. So if we got written comments, uh, about another draft, I think that might be helpful before we go out to the public. I don't know if anyone agrees with me.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's fair. I think that's fair. Yeah, we, we, we have time to do public meetings, so.
Not, we're not in any rush.
No. Okay, no, I, I think, I think that's planned.
Okay, I agree.
Okay. Um, Patrick, anything on the zoning map change or can we kind of?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to be able to put any time into that. Uh, in the next month though, I do want to prepare some maps, um, looking at land area access, uh, existing features. Uh, as you recall, I, I did discuss it with the, uh, Conservation Commission person, also DPW. Uh, so, you know, I think I can get some mapping together within a few weeks.
I, I think, uh, the other thing that, that, you know, I mentioned it at the last meeting, but I think it's something that we have to pay attention to. And that is the, uh, new provision of the Housing Choice Law, which does for MBTA communities, uh, require, uh, certain, um, multifamily units, not by special permit, but as of right. So, um, that new section, section three A may have, um, an impact on what we're doing in terms of, uh, expanding the commercial district.
What does it say, Marnie? Essentially that, uh, there has to be a certain amount of, uh, the housing.
I have it in front of me and since it's a brand new section, I can read it. And it says, an MBTA community shall have, shall, which is, you know, a term of art, shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing, which is a defined term, is permitted as of right, provided however, that such multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children. For the purposes of this section, a district of reasonable size shall, one, have a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre, subject to any, fifteen units per acre, subject to any further limitations imposed by section forty of chapter one thirty-one, which I'm not familiar with, and title five, which I am, of the State Environmental Code, established per section pursuant to section thirteen of chapter twenty-one A, to be located not more than a half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, blah, blah, blah. And, uh, further, any MBTA community that fails to comply with this section shall not be eligible for funds from the Housing Choice Initiative as described by the governor. The Local Capital Projects Fund established under another section, the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. And so, so there are penalties associated with failing to, to establish.
Let me ask you a question. Can you not allow a use by right and still subject it to site plan review?
Yes, you can.
Yes, I always thought site plan review is not a vote up or down on, on a use. So you're allowed to do this use, but we can kind of.
You can condition it.
Yeah.
So I don't see any, in that con, context, I, there probably isn't a conflict between our current downtown zoning, which subjects things to site plan review, correct?
I think it's, uh, subject to special permit.
No, it's, it's site plan.
It's site plan review.
So, and I, I, I asked, I asked that of Patrick to talk to town council to see if our current, um, business district, um, that does allow multifamily with commercial, if that qualifies.
And she is, uh, she's on the job. Uh, she will be looking at it. She does caution me to say that, uh, there's a lot more detail that's going to be coming out. Uh, with, uh, what the state has already promulgated. Uh, what we have is fairly conceptual in nature. Uh, and there's a lot of details that, you know, I guess the policymakers were way ahead of the detail makers. So, uh, you know, they've got to get their heads together and get some directives out to us, uh, communities. So we're, we have a better ability to understand what it is they want of us. I, like Brian, I do believe our, uh, B district is pretty darn dead on to what it is that they're expecting us as a community to have around the T, uh, station. So, you know, I'm, I'm pretty darn comfortable with that. There may be some fine tuning, but I, you know, uh, we've asked her to weigh in on it.
Cause she wants to wait also until the, there's any further directives from the state.
Well, she wants to. Pressured her to give us a preliminary understanding of how it fits. Based on what she knows already. You know, there, there are probably a, a good dozen different areas where the state's giving us new requirements. This is just one of them.
Yeah, I mean, it, it would seem to make total sense because it seems like most of the MBTA spots are in, you know, the, the heart of a town in, in a downtown or a business district, right? That you'd think they'd want, uh, some commercial to be or that they wouldn't frown on commercial being part of the requirement of a development like that, given it's in a, in a business district, but.
Yeah, the, the only caveat there is, and if I understand it correctly, it says, shall have a minimum of fifteen units per acre.
Right.
Our, ours is, does, does not speak to that. It just is left open to whatever the developer can fit on that site.
Right.
Well, our, you know, our retort to that, and you'll see in some of the more fine print regarding that topic, is that they do preface the, uh, state sanitary standards.
Yeah.
That, so I'm absolutely confident that that covers us.
Okay, good. We're ahead of the game.
Good, we're, 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 we're right up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a real fight to get that bylaw, but believe me.
Yeah, our neighbor to the south is very nervous because they have a, a sizable farm down there next to the train station that has the potential to be sold at, at any time, so they say.
Oh, that's the, uh, that's the equestrian.
Yeah, the horse from the cross from Pingery.
Yeah.
Haili property.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, they, they can either come up with the bylaw or forego, you know, grant money, right? So.
Yeah, property is not under conservancy restriction?
I don't think so. Just not yet. Okay, um, I guess we can move on to board business minutes. Does everybody have a chance to look at those from the last meeting? I guess our last two meetings.
I thought she did a good job and with the bullet points and summarizing, you know, the key. The discussion.
She and had to listen, or she actually did two sets of notes. Because the request came at the tail end of the last meeting to put it into uh, bullet form. Uh, but bless her heart, she did a a great job both ways. Uh, I gave you the copy that had the bullet point. Items that came up as part of the zoning discussions, so we could better follow.
Okay, any comments on those from the second? Did we not approve the nineteenth? January nineteenth?
I think that I was late in getting those to you uh, because I couldn't get access, they're recording, it didn't get put into the cloud, so I had to ferret around in my computer and get some help to finally find it. Uh, so, no, uh, we didn't approve those earlier.
I don't know that we've approved the minutes from January fifth. Although I don't, you know, I don't think there are any problems with those minutes. And with respect to the minutes from February second, the bullet points, I think they were, they were really good. I took pretty copious notes. So I found a few other items that we could consider, but they don't, I don't think in the last analysis affect the minutes. Because if we assemble discussion points, we can include some of these things and they might have, you know, been missed because they were more like an aside, but I just had a few things that I noted, you know, that that we could, we could add to our discussion, not not really significant for purposes of approving the minutes. For example, someone pointed out that we should have a mechanism for increasing the amount of the payments, some type of mechanism for over time, increasing the amount uh, that's paid pursuant to the uh, the formula in the matrix. Um, so that's something we can consider, but it doesn't really affect them, the the minutes, which I think are fine.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, as you might recall, one of the things that we've been trying to focus on doing. And and I know that Anne has been more detail oriented here uh, because we've asked for that, is we've tried to be more focused on what the Secretary of State wants out of minutes, which is the topic discussion as well as the vote.
Yeah. Okay, somebody want to make a motion on the February second minutes?
I make a motion. Except minutes of February second.
Second.
Richard seconds. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor will do a roll call vote. Uh, Richard.
Richard Boroff, I.
Corey.
Corey W, I.
Rick.
Rick Mitchell, I.
Bill.
Bill Wheaton, I.
Marty.
Marty Crouch, I.
Brian Stein is an I. Um, what about January nineteenth? Somebody want to make a motion on those?
I make a motion. Go ahead.
I was first.
Go ahead, Marty.
I move to approve the minutes of the January nineteenth planning board meeting.
Second, Rick Mitchell.
Okay, um, all those in favor, Bill?
Bill Wheaton, yes.
Marty.
Marty Crouch, I.
Rick.
Rick Mitchell, I.
Corey.
Corey W, I.
Richard.
Richard Boroff, I.
Brian Stein, I. Anomalous. Anything else, Patrick?
You know, let me, Marty, you raised something, an issue just a few minutes ago that got me thinking a little bit about the bylaw, the flexible zoning bylaw. Which is, we might want to somehow have the ability to adjust that payment, the fifty thousand dollars, without going before the town. And having the whole bylaw reapproved. In other words, suppose we found that every developer around was coming in and we got, oh, this is just too generous, or conversely, after two years and nobody come and and we thought, well, it's not accomplishing its goal, maybe we should knock this down to forty thousand or thirty or twenty-five or raise it. I'm just wondering, there's some way of putting that into the bylaw, so we don't have to make adjustments.
I understand.
Bylaw.
I understand what you're saying. Um, one avenue might be to include the payment as we as it's presently contemplated, the payments as contemplated. Uh, and then indicate that it's subject to some type of adjustment pursuant to the rules and regulations adopted by the planning board. And I was also thinking that the building codes, um, whatever, however we define that should be defined in the rules and regulations, so that over time, as technology changes, we can redefine what's required. Do you do you follow what I'm saying? So we're going to give a density bonus and we define for water efficiency and we define what those that standard is in the rules and regulations so that we can change those standards without having to rewrite the bylaw.
Patrick, do you ever see that in other towns' bylaws?
Yes, as a matter of fact, they do. They reference certain standards. Uh, certain bylaw or building codes based on a a specific date. And I think that would be how we would want to do it. And then we would, you know, to Marnie's point, we would want to have the ability to say that the planning board could update, revise those standards based on future advancements in, you know, building codes, et cetera, or something to that effect.
Right. And the same goes for any payments, they could be adjusted, you know, and that and how it's adjusted, the mechanism for adjusting the payment would be in the rules and regulations. So like every five years, you know, if there's inflation or whatever, you would add some amount of money to the to the you know, person went to the formula, you could, some mechanism for adjusting the formula.
Tie it to CPI.
Yeah, something like that, but you can put, you can make, you can reference any change uh, to be dictated by what's in the rules and regulations, so that the bylaw doesn't become antiquated.
Go ahead, Brian.
Right, no, I think the whole, you know, adjusting for inflation is one thing, is I know Bill was thinking, though, I, if if, let's say, the fifty thousand dollars ended up being too much, people weren't using it, how do we adjust it down?
Yeah, yeah.
How how can the board do that on its own? And I think you're right, Marty, it needs to be in the rules and regs. It's just obviously that language of how best to do that and.
Right, and it it may be something like that, the planning board at its discretion may adjust that amount up to twenty percent, up to twenty percent, up or down.
Exactly. Exactly. I think that once we get the list of comments and we discuss them, then it really comes down to drafting and.
I mean, it's not, it's not like the fifty thousand dollar number came up as a result of some humongous study and lots of analysis and statistics. It's a little bit, you know, it seems reasonable.
One of the other comments that's not in the bullet point, and I think this was Tom Ford. He, you know, there was a lot of discussion about the eighty thousand um, square foot minimum lot size, and he was advocating that we we had a a variable lot size based on the zoning district, and he suggested that in each zoning district, the lot size should be two and a half to three times what the existing zoning is. So in the R one uh, A district, which is twenty thousand square feet, you would have a minimum of sixty thousand square feet, and then in the R A district, it would be twenty-four thousand square feet. And his other comment that that we should adjust, and and actually, it goes to the senior housing bylaw as well. We're in the matrix, we've referred to per acre, but the zoning districts are in square feet. So, you know, we refer to eighty thousand square feet as two acres, but it's really just eighty thousand square feet. And so we should be consistent in the matrix and and eliminate the reference to acres. And I I think that's an excellent point. It's just.
That's in the bullets, so.
Yeah.
That's fair. Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Anything else, Patrick?
A couple of quick things.
Yeah.
We have had a parking study ongoing. This next meeting will be February the twenty-fourth at two P M. Uh, I have a, an electronic mailing going out to folks that have been interested and participated in it. Uh, heretofore, certainly the H D C have been very engaged in it so far. Uh, we'll have a lot to to work through at this next meeting. Um, so happy to see that we're making some progress there. Uh, let's see, also, later this week, uh, we'll be signing a contract with a an environmental firm that will be evaluating for development or developable area. Uh, whatever's left and buildable out of the commercial overlay district, which is basically the landfill area. So we've been talking about that for some time. Uh, I got ten thousand dollars to to deal with this a while back, so uh, we'll get that under contract later this week.
Great. All right. Billy, you want to make that motion again?
Okay, make a motion that we adjourn.
Oh, hold on, I, I wasn't having the best feed there. Who, Billy, you made the motion to adjourn?
Phil Wheaton makes motion to adjourn.
Okay, who seconded?
I, Richard Boroff, second.
Okay, um, all those in favor, Marnie?
Marnie Crouch, I.
Bill?
Bill Wheaton, I.
Rick?
Rick Mitchell, I.
Corey?
Corey W, I.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, I.
Ryan is an I as well. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Patrick.
Okay, good night.